Superintendent for District Seven, John Corbett. And I asked him, you know, what kind of money would needed to be spent to actually be able to fill the program at 100%. I think it is a good program. Besides helping the kids in school, and actually, these are kids that may be at risk. And it helps with juvenile delinquency, potentially, so keep our police officers not handling those types of matters for these at-risk children. Mr. Corbett, and I apologize, he gave this to me back in beginning of February and it sat in my briefcase. But their estimation is with an increase of $10,000 that they will be able to increase the number of students from 15 to 23. They will be able to increase the number of teachers, so that instead of having two teachers there, there will be three teachers. They would also add one social worker. And the idea behind adding the social worker would be to put more of a burden on the parents, making sure that the parents are following up and doing certain things to make sure that there's turnover in this program, that we don't have kids in this program just forever. The cost of this would be an additional $10,000 to operate the school district. Through John Corbett made a commitment that if the city would pay half of that, that they would match the other half. So with an additional $5,000, making our contribution not be 10,000, but 15,000, we'll be able to fund this program 100%.
Alderman Wesley?
I have one question, and Marshall, you did give me this memo today. That's 10,000 for us or 5,000 for us and 5,000 for them?
5,000 for us, 5,000 for the school district.
But it doesn't say the school district in this memo, it doesn't say the school district is, their board is on board with this. It's from Mr. Corbett only. I have no problem supporting this recommendation and increase that fund to 5,000. But again, I would like a letter from the school board saying that they are paying 5,000 dollars.
I agree. I did talk to Mr. Corbett about that before the meeting this evening. And he advised that at their meeting last night, that they did give the commitment to post an additional $5,000. It wasn't on the agenda item, so they would have to do it at a formal meeting. But we could certainly, if we increase, we don't fund this until July. So if we increased our budget from 10,800, as it is this year, to 15,000, we can confirm that that gets done before we actually issue any check. So we could make that as a condition of the funding.
Chief, do you care to comment on the proposal? Does it look fairly sound to you?
Yes, it does. You know, we were just kind of looking over this the last couple of days, and you have our yearly report in front of you. We're pretty consistent with having, coming into contact with about 300 at-risk juveniles per year through the police department. When you look at '06, '05, and '04, it fluctuates from 309 up to as many as 330. We also run a peer jury program, and we also do an in-house counseling system. We reach out to a fairly large amount of people, but once again, it is on a limited basis. This is just another tool that we can use to try to minimize and try to get as much diversion as we can before it becomes to a problem where we get another person in that 300 group.
Okay. And was there a motion yet on it? Okay. Alderman Wesley?
So we are asking to increase it to what?
15,000.
Why? Because we already increases?
The line item right now is 10,800, so it'd be an increase of $4,200 as proposed budget right now.
Are you making that a motion?
Yeah, my motion would be increase the line item for the District Seven after-school program to a total amount of $15,000, subject to the school board matching the $5,000 increase.
Alderman Wesley, are you seconding that or asking for clarification?
No, I'll second that, providing that we get the letter from the school board and not from Mr. Corbett, the school board.
And is that in concurrence with your motion, Alderman?
Yeah, the school board has to fund it, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. On the question, Alderman Shaki?
As I mentioned before, Alderman Shaki, is there any way for us to verify this program? You know, we ask people to justify when we're giving them money, what we're getting back for. Last year, we got the letters from the children. It's easy to sit down with the children for 15 minutes in one meeting and say, write a quick letter for us so we can hand it in. Can we get something from the teachers or some kind of statistics that is doing some good? As long as we know that, I think we're all for it.
Sure, I think the chief can.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Corbett about a month and a half ago with regards to that specific issue I think Alderman Wesley raised when we were trying to set up a meet. I believe it's Mr. Corbett's intent this year, the superintendent of the schools, that when we go to put this proposal for disbursement before the council, that he himself is going to appear. Okay.
And he also advised me that, you know, because I said it's also important to see the school portion, you know, how the I don't know if it's a 50-50 split, or they're at 60 or we're at 40. But I think it is important that we see those numbers. And he advised me a lot of things they don't charge for the program, such as copy and paper, all those extra items. And I said, really, they should be accounting for that for the program, because that is a contribution that the school is making that we are not. We're just writing one lump sum check to them, and they're funding the personnel and all these supplies and the transportation. That should all be figured in, you know, this cost.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chief, one last question for my four points. You've been running this police budget for how many years now, since your predecessor?
I've been police chief for two, in two years and some odd months.
So this is your third budget under you?
Pretty much. And the chief, the city manager in the past would also, I would also collaborate with him just as deputy chief Festa and Sergeant Mike Rivas are collaborating with me.
Have you found anything as far as any expenses or the revenues that your predecessor either didn't have or were different that you would want to make a recommendation to change?
Yes, I'd like to keep my job.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I noticed, Chief, on Do-Meggie, you have zeros across the board, which I guess requires a cash contribution or an officer, so I take it you intend to continue to rotate in officers?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that completes our police budget. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Manager?
Pretty good job without getting raked over the coals, eh?
At this point, we will have Mr. Home come up, and we will go through City Services.
Sure. Okay, let's do Q and A, and then we'll, uh...
Gary, we'll let you do your presentation another night.
Yeah.
We just...
Are you going to say something about what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ask one initial question, and then we could do Q and A. I know last year you had a proposal of a new restructure and et cetera. Do you feel that over this past fiscal year, have you gotten to that mark where it's fully implemented? Or, and if not, how far along are we in that?
That is somewhat fluid. I came back to you in October, because one of the supervisors had left, and we basically changed the organizational chart again, consolidating it. I actually have copies of that that were given to you at that time. The organizational chart that I have before me tonight, in the last couple of days, has changed again. I've got some people that have left. So my department is continuing to see, you know, fluid changeover. I think the anticipation is, the hope is, that when we get a contract in place, that we can start to solidify some of these positions and get things hired. If maybe they can get the PowerPoint up on the screen, and then even if we don't go through it, I can at least have it if I need to reference it.
Okay. So then, can we start the Q and A, or do you want to wait and...
No, that'll be there, and that's fine, and if we don't go through it, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay, Central Service, Alderman Tolemy?
Gary, I just have, I just have one question. Okay? And it has to do with the professional services category. I noticed for that last fiscal year, we actually, we budgeted 3,500, and we're looking to spend 33,000. So then, so then this year, I'm sorry, it's line item?
Yeah, 2-34, Public Works Administration.
What was, what was the, I mean, why did we?
Here's what we did.
Yeah, okay.
Under improvements last year, which would be line item 6-21, we had $60,000. Those were the improvements we had talked about earlier.
Okay.
If you recall, during the course of the year, our heavy truck lift went out. So approximately 30,000 of that went towards purchase of the heavy truck lift, which was a capital item for the building. The other 30 of that, I had projected to go into professional services for the space needs study. Now, we just awarded that study, and obviously considerably less than that. So we will not be hitting, you know, in all likelihood, this 33,000. But I didn't know that number until just, you know, last week, when we finalized the number. So you are correct, that 33,000 is high, it will be less than that, so the total of the 60 will not be spent.
It was, it was 2-34, 47, 2-34. It's, it's under the contractual services. Yeah, and it's actually the, it's professional services.
But as you go into the proposed budget, it's at 32.5. And that actually represents half of the cost for the architectural services for the Public Works Building, the other half being on the water and sewer site.
Right. I mean, overall, Gary, when I, when I, again, when I looked at this particular budget, I mean, there was, there was really, the only thing, unfortunately, the only thing that was glaring, okay, is the personnel costs. You know, I mean, that was the biggest expense that I could see was your boost. And that, you know, I don't think there's anybody, you know, with, in any of the departments that's not going to have that, that big. Because as far as the rest of your costs, I think you've really contained them, or you're keeping them pretty close.
If I can go through that. Person for person or total personnel, this is for the overall department, not just general fund, but overall department, we haven't increased. We're 34 and 34 from one year to year. This is an overall summary of salaries from the '06, '07 budget to the '07, '08 budget. Now again, overall, Water, Sewer, Enterprise Fund plus General Fund. You see, the bottom line there is actually a decrease in the total salaries. That's primarily due to the back pay that we're hoping, we're anticipating to pay out in this year, and we won't have to carry that back pay into the next year. If you take the back pay out of the equation, we're essentially flat. And to answer Alderman Subak's question from earlier, I'd argue that we have seen a savings from the early retirement, because if you go back one year further, '05, '06, we're flat. So for the last two years, the salary number on a whole have been flat, whereas you typically would expect to see increases every year. So I think we have seen that savings. But you're right, on the general fund side, this is just the general fund side. The numbers have gone up this year about 4%, and some of that was because I was split 70-30 in last year's budget, as was the engineer and the technician. And this year, we've actually kind of more reflected reality, and we've split us 50-50. So some of our salaries have been shifted back into the general fund.
Gary, last year, you were showing us horrible pictures of the building. And I think we budgeted last year $60,000 for improvements.
Yeah.
And now this year, it's zero. It looks like you're moving it to, you're moving it to a different fund?
I understand, it's all now going to be under the Capital Projects Fund.
Okay. Why are we putting it all in our capital projects now?
Alderman Subak, I advise Gary that it needed to be moved, because it is a capital item. It's something, it's gonna, those improvements are going to last more than one year.
So maintenance is one year or less, that's the cutoff?
Yes, exactly.
And then the tax that we passed, though, the referendum, that's not for capital projects of this sort, that's more for infrastructure?
It's for infrastructure, I mean...
Okay, so it's not, so...
I don't know that they're, well, I don't even know if this has been tested in the courts, but this tax is relatively new. It can be used for property tax relief or infrastructure needs.
I mean, I wanted it used for infrastructure. And when I meant infrastructure, I meant roads, water, and sewer mains was my goal. Not that this stuff is not important, but I think we need other funding sources to pay for this.
Right. And we also, remember, have the utility tax going 100% into the capital projects.
Right.
So...
Gary, as we always have, Gary, can you justify, you brought in an engineer last year, an engineer tech. Where are we going to see the cost savings from bringing them on staff? What engineering services are going to go down as a line item in this? I know it's not here tonight, but where do we see that cost savings? And do you see us having enough projects to sustain them long-term? Are we going to be making projects to make sure they justify their salaries?
No, we're definitely not going to be making projects. You've seen one cost savings tonight as an inter-fund transfer. We're taking $50,000 from...
Yes, I see.
...service areas, which normally would have gone out the door to a consultant. Instead, this is coming, an inter-fund transfer over to the general fund as revenue. You'll see another cost savings...
So I'm sorry, not, so then actually the industrial park is paying for the engineers, for the services they're going to provide for the industrial park, we're matching them up?
Exactly.
Okay.
And you will see savings in the Capital Projects Fund, where you normally would have engineers for roadway projects. You know, that number now is, we're looking to do roadway projects in-house. We'll still have some surveying that we need to sub out, we'll still have material testing that we need to sub out. But all the engineering, construction inspection, design, will all be done in-house.
We don't want to do surveying inside, because we'd have to buy all that equipment, and that'd get too expensive. We might as well outside.
Equipment's a big capital expense, and frankly, there's, just like in every profession, there's certain things that are best done by the people who do it every single day. If we go out and survey once a year for a project, we're not going to be proficient at it. I'd rather hire someone who does it every day, and they're more proficient.
Are you going to track in the future then, so that when future councils question, how do, you know, we're too small, how do we have an in-house engineer? Are you going to be able to track the savings that we're getting? I suggest you do, track the savings that we're getting from that person, to say, this is what we used to pay for out-of-pocket expenses for engineer, and now we're doing it in-house.
And from engineering company A to B to C, the percentage of the total cost that's used for engineering is generally the same. So we know what our total costs are going to be for those projects. Therefore, we can come up with that percentage for what our engineering costs could have been, and that would be our savings. So that will be relatively easy to track.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it looks like there's no other questions and comments.
Cedar is actually on the, in the Capital Projects Fund, so...
It is, Alderman?
Right, that's what's being proposed. And your maintenance of sidewalks is boosted up considerably this year.
But the chairman isn't met with, he hasn't met with the chairman and vice chairman yet to review those numbers.
Oh, Capital Projects, no.
Mr. Mayor?
I do have a question on your flow chart. You identified Dave Graff as the assistant director, but you've got him on off to the side. Is he over the three supervisors?
Yes, he is, and I struggled with how to get that chart and trying to make it not as confusing as I could. But he is, he is my number two, so he would be over the supervisors, correct?
Is this Kevin, the other guy under there, is he still with us?
He's now a to-be-determined, correct?
Oh, so he left?
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry, which position is that?
The engineering technician.
Okay.
Has changed in the last couple of days, that's now a to-be-determined.
Okay.
And one of the dial-a-ride drivers is now a to-be-determined. Steve Franks.
What happened with the engineering technician? I know that we're...
Yeah.
Did they last a year?
That's a personnel issue.
Oh, sorry.
About that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like there's no other questions or comments. Gary, do you have any final comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Home. Oh, City Manager, Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We'd just like to have the finance director kind of, kind of give a closing sum, sum up.
I understand your issue, that some of us were under the impression that we were going through each of the four. And Gary, do I understand correct that you're representing four tabs here? City Services, Admin, Street Division, Vehicle Maintenance, and Stormwater?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll just go down each tab, and I'll say, any questions, comments? So City Services Administration, any further questions, comments? Okay, I take that as non-street division. Any questions, comments, Alderman Tolemy?
I want to bring up, Gary, and the only one I brought up on this one here was, I noticed that you were raising the sidewalk maintenance. And I guess I'm questioning, isn't it, isn't it a capital expense?
We will have both. This will be sidewalk maintenance in trip hazards, cracked sidewalks.
Do we have that many cracked sidewalks in a city? $50,000?
Yeah.
We went out just in Ward Three.
Oh, just in Ward Three?
Ward Three, just in, no, we went out just in Ward Three.
Who's in my authority already? Jesus!
We went out just in Ward Three this past fall, and identified locations, and those locations far exceeded our current budget. And that was just in Ward Three, we didn't hit the other parts of the city. So we do feel confident that $50,000 is needed, and we'll probably more than exceed that every year, but obviously, that'll be our budget.
Okay, the only other question I had was, I noticed you only have $10,000 in here for stream bank stabilization. You know, my concern is that we spent a lot of money, okay, and, you know, on, with that program initially. And I don't feel that $10,000 is enough. I mean, you've seen the north side, okay, and when those folks came in, God only knows why they did the forest preserve, okay, property when they redid it. But there's areas in, you know, along where private, you know, the private property, where they've already eroded, you know, several feet back. And I don't think $10,000 is going to cover, I mean, that needs to get fixed before it gets worse. And I don't think $10,000 is enough to...
I know as part of the Phase Three part of that, which is not where you were talking, but elsewhere, the Phase Three part of that was just looked at, we had to have a consultant look at that from an environmental wetland standpoint, in order to satisfy the end of our permit with DuPage County. And so that part of it was just looked at, and was given a clean bill of health with the exception of some plant materials.
Okay.
The part that you're talking about, I understand, there are, you have physical structural concerns about, about the system.
Right.
Remember, we looked at it, and we will look at it again this spring. We looked at it last year, we'll look at it again this spring, and program in, you know, expenditures. We're not anticipating, based on our inspection last year, of having, in fact, we're only projecting a couple thousand dollars as we finish out the year.
But that's because we didn't do anything, I mean...
Right.
You're talking about, you're going to need more Ajax, you're going to need filler, because you're talking about where, where the Ajax are in the water, it's already eroded as much as two and three feet behind those Ajax.
And I know, and I don't know, I think this item got moved over from a previous budget, so I don't have it at my fingertips. Previous year, Alderman, you can maybe help me. In '05, when I first started here, and there were repairs made, do you remember what we finished out that year? Were we close, I think we were just close to the 10.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, well, if that was that one little patch that they did?
One by Irving Park Road and the one...
And the one over on the forest preserve property?
Yes.
Which I don't know why we didn't bill them for, but that's another issue. You think they could do it for 10?
That year, they did those two little...
Okay, well, if you think that they can get done for 10, then I'm not going to, going to say otherwise. But I don't think it's $10,000.
And you're right, as it ages, perhaps my projections going into the future are a little optimistic. Maybe I need to be a little more pessimistic going into the future.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley?
Two questions. $20,000 for gypsy moth spraying, are we doing that this year? We should say we have to. I'm just asking. I mean, it was in the budget last year, I'm just asking, why is it in there? I thought they sprayed, the county sprayed last year.
Yeah, it was requested that it be added this year. You're right, it was not in there last year, you're right, the county did spray last year, but they did not spray in all of the affected areas. We actually found some infected areas up by School Street, which weren't within the county's...
Well, I have no problem, but I thought the county sprayed last year, that's why I'm questioning.
They did the state.
The other question is, the other equipment for $16,000, what is that?
Those are for the, our Dixie choppers, or that's a brand name for mowers. We actually have two riding mowers that need to get replaced. One of those was delayed and cut from last year's budget, so we ended up with two of them in this year's budget.
Alderman Subak?
Prior to spending the money for the gypsy moth spray, though, we'll confirm that the county's not going to do the area that we're going to do, obviously.
Yes.
And then, as far as the tree replacement Parkway program, last year, it looks like we budgeted, are going to spend 20. I'm happy about the increase of 30. How many people that put in requests are on the list didn't get done this year, and is 30 going to be adequate?
I don't know the exact number, but I know that if we, if we, I came up with 30, trying to be a little conservative. So I'm confident that we'll get the people, we actually got a good response, we put it in the newsletter last year. We ended up creating the '07, '08 list even last year, but I don't know the exact number, I can get that.
Okay, because I know on some of the road projects we did, those people, we kind of made the implication that we'd do it this year, so...
I can, I can get the numbers as to how many people we currently have on the list here in February.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like that concludes Street Division. Next item is Vehicle Maintenance, any questions, comments? Alderman Subak?
Just one question. I know we have a vehicle maintenance program, does like the Park District have their own vehicle maintenance program? And does the school have their own vehicle maintenance program? Have we ever looked at where the city of Wooddale could have one vehicle maintenance program to handle like city vehicles, school vehicles, and Park District vehicles, and kind of centralize it? Or Joe says it will never work?
I think it's been talked about, in fact, I think it's been talked about even with relation to the fire district. Right now, I don't know if any of the agencies have really expressed an interest in getting together. We've talked about it and thought about it, and frankly, just haven't pursued it, because we've got other fires to be putting out.
Sure.
Alderman Coals?
I'll tell Mr. Subak, if a bus breaks down and a vehicle breaks down for the Streets and Senate, the Street Department, City Services, who is the mechanic that is going to work on?
Who gets priority?
The first truck that his, Gary's going to say, get that truck done. And the guy's going to say, get that bus done. But the guy works for Gary, guess who's going to be done first? And that's, that's why it can be done.
Any other questions, comments on vehicle maintenance? That concludes that item, and last item, Stormwater Maintenance. Any questions, comments on Stormwater Maintenance?
There was a meeting today, I'll chime in, about the creation of a stormwater utility at the county level, and subsequently then at the municipal level. That's kind of in its infancy stages, but it sounds like it is going forward. So keep that in the back of your minds for future budgets and future years.
Can you explain that a little more detailed, what is it?
Stormwater utility, basically paying for maintenance of stormwater infrastructure. Detention basins, regional flooding basins, stormwater, storm sewers.
That the county would do that?
The county would do that, and also at the municipal level, it's being talked about.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wesley?
One question, maintenance storm sewers, $40,000, from 28 to 40,000?
And that number will continue to increase as we get our program up and going. Remember, we started with essentially no program. And this year, we are trying to build a program, and next year, we'll continue to build on that and eventually get the GIS system up with it, so those numbers are going to go up.
So that's part of the GSI system?
This is physical pipes and manholes, this number is. But the GI, or, let me say it, the GIS system will map that, and then we'll be able to even further analyze where we need our maintenance and go forward. So this is an effort to build a storm sewer maintenance program.
Okay, so we didn't do that before you?
Alderman Subak?
The purchase of any additional speed bumps or speed humps, what do we call them now, where would that, fund would that come out of?
Road and bridge.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? None from Alderman Tolemy? Okay, that concludes the questions, comments, and Ms. Powers, if you'd like to do the final wrap-up?
I just wanted to go over our tentative schedule. You will receive your tabs and your budgets for all of the other funds no later than next Thursday. And then we will discuss all of those on March 8th. In the interim, we'll be refining some of the revenue numbers. And hopefully get, well, hopefully we'll be closer to settlement with Local 150, which will help us firm up the salary numbers, we'll get better health insurance numbers. And then our goal would be to come back to you on March the 22nd with all of the, all of the changes and modifications made, so that you have a last opportunity to look at all of the funds in total. And then we'll bring the ordinance to you in, at the first or second meeting of, council meeting in April. So that's, that's the goal, that's what we're going to try to accomplish. And we want you to have at least a week to review the budgets, and I'm sorry, it couldn't be sooner, but we've spent a lot of additional time with the Local 150 proposals, going over those, and time had to be diverted from budget preparation, so I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, then, that concludes, let's see. That concludes our item on the agenda, and next item would be...